Absolutely, I very much appreciate Mayor and Commissioner for allowing me to sit in for a couple of moments this morning or this afternoon and say hello. Everybody can see my face a little more often now. And we're going to be moving around the county tomorrow making our official announcement for our campaign for County Council in District Two. And, you know, we thought it'd be very important actually to be here and Elton is a huge part of our district and, you know, part of my efforts going forward if elected would be to help the town of Elton as much as possible. You're obviously a mutual part of the county, you have a county seat. So, anything and everything that I can do, I will make every attempt to fulfill for you. And feel free at any point in time to reach out to me, I'll be very visible. I live just outside the town limits and appreciate the time.
Bill, thank you. Of course, I don't know if you've ever met Lou George, our town manager?
Yeah.
And I think you know, I think you've probably met him. You ever met Lou Couch?
No.
Charles Gibbons?
Yeah.
Earl Poner, you've met? I know Mary Jo Hazen.
For sure.
I think the Chief Hazen, John I know Hazen.
John for sure. Anything that you have, questions, anything you'd like to talk to me about or approach me about, you'll find I'm a very approachable person and I'm really happy to listen to what your concerns, questions are. And if we don't know the answer to them, we'll get them.
Thank you. Bill, thank you so much. And I appreciate you making your first announcement in Town Hall of the Town of Elton. Thank you.
Tomorrow we will end up in Elton, that'll be our final destination and then we will make our final announcement and we'll come to you here at the Town Hall.
Yeah, that'd be great. So, I'm going to be out of town tomorrow, but it'd be great to work with Michelle to make that happen.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Okay, the first item on the agenda, the Town of Elton, the code, Chapter 13.12, Pretreatment and Industrial Waste. And this is, I guess, kind of opened up the topic of where we are and what we are trying to attempt. The Town of Elton, we're very, very fortunate to have two new businesses which are going to both be breweries into our camp. We're extremely excited about it. We know the financial impact. We also know the financial impact to each and both of the breweries in coming into our camp. We have had many, many questions and we've had a lot of meetings. And I've met with Jason Taylor, I've met with both the new brewery folks and we decided last week, and actually we had talked to some other areas, but I had Michelle reach out to Hartford County. It actually started out that we contacted Bel Air, Bel Air sent us to here, and then it ended up with Hartford County in general. We reached out to Newark Delaware, we've reached out to Ocean City and into Salisbury. So, we're trying to make sure that we're doing things right, proper, and make sure we're not doing something we don't need to be doing. We want to make sure that we're doing the right things for our community and for the new businesses. So, I invited today, after we spoke to quite a few different people, we wanted to invite Mr. Williams. Ed Williams is the Plant Operations Manager for Hartford County Government, and he was so gracious to come in. And I thought it was important to invite Ed down because how many breweries do you have?
Three right now and a couple kind of never one at the end.
Would you mind sitting over here, Ed?
Not at all.
And, you know, this is a very informal part of the meeting, but I knew I had some questions and I wanted to ask these questions because they keep coming up. The Town of Elton, we have the pretreatment program, the application and so forth, and you had an opportunity to look at that, and what do you think about our program per se?
Yes, I had the opportunity to review both the pretreatment code and the application package, and I found it to be consistent with Hartford County's program, but also consistent with the federal regulations and Maryland state requirements for the establishment of a pretreatment program.
With your experience, and I'm now acting, I'm acting like an attorney here. Wait a second. What am I doing here? Wait a second. Why am I talking like this? But I do want to get these questions out. We're currently, what do you think's important for us to be treating? Jason, I'm not trying to step on your toes, but I'm trying to find out, my main goal of this was to find out that you do have your breweries testing. Can you go over that process? Let's see that.
Yeah, in Hartford County, we look at an industry as they come in and we figure out what are the potential problems that they could create for us, what are the loadings that they could, problems in a treatment plant where a collection system can range from corrosion of the pipes, actually destroying the infrastructure, preventing sewage flow, which is very expensive, to upsetting the sewage treatment plant, causing the biological process not to work, or contaminating it. Another issue could be discharge of solids that can cause a blockage in the sewer leading from the facility or to your treatment plant, resulting in sanitary sewer overflows. And the state's enforcement posture on sanitary sewer overflows is everyone gets a fine. And those fines come to the municipality, not to the industry. So, it's incumbent that you identify what problems can be created, what can be resolved through best management practices at the industry, and how you can continually protect your sewage treatment plant and your collection system from any upset or interference. But there is one other aspect that you need to keep in mind. Once you have a pretreatment program in place that's been approved by the state and by proxy, the U.S. EPA, you're required to implement that program consistently across the board with everyone. And failure to implement your program properly can result in enforcement actions by either the state or the EPA against the municipality. And you definitely don't want to sell yourself short and put yourself in an enforcement posture with either of those entities.
Now, in Hartford County, what chemicals or what are you asking to be pretreated?
Typically, we look at a brewery, we look at the size of, the capacity that it is initially, and their expansion plans or their expansion potential. The most notable things that we look for in a brewery are higher or low pH that can cause corrosion to the collection system. Solids from the yeasts and the work and the various processes within the brewery, the brewing process, that can generate solids that can adhere to the sewer lines and create, over time, begin to occlude those lines and contribute to blockages. And temperature, you can't raise your temperature or lower your, or you can't raise the temperature, you can't discharge greater than 140 degrees water Fahrenheit to the sewer system, and you can't raise the temperature more to more than 105 degrees Fahrenheit at your sewage treatment plant. Both of those can cause significant problems, both in the collection system and at the treatment plant. And one final thing is the strength of the wastewater, usually measured in BOD or biochemical oxygen demand. It's how much oxygen is necessary to break down the wastes in that. The microbes in your treatment plant use that, the BOD, as food for the biological processes.
Does Hartford County use an independent testing group, or does, help me understand the testing process?
We do use a third-party lab to do our evaluation of industries. We have an in-house lab that is capable of doing the BOD, the suspended solids, the phosphorus, and several other parameters. But we rely on a third-party lab. We physically collect the samples and set up the samplers and tape them down. But we rely on a third-party so that the evaluation is independently verifiable. It's done by a lab that has NE LAB certification, which is a national certification, saying that they use standards that are established and accepted within the industry.
So, the county is doing that, not the individual?
Oh, no. The industry as well is required to sample for a couple of reasons. One, we, the industry needs to consistently demonstrate that they're meeting their limits. We are required to verify that the data that they provide is reasonable and representative. If I was unscrupulous and I ran an industry, I would sample every day on Monday morning because we didn't do anything. We haven't really ramped up yet. So, you could pick and choose when you sample to creatively manipulate the appearance of compliance. So, the industry's required to monitor, and we're required to monitor. So, and collectively, we put all those together when we calculate a surcharge. And I do know, I did notice that you guys have a surcharge program. And what that is, is it establishes, your program both has a surcharge, but also has a ceiling limit, which is a good thing because an industry, the treatment plant is built to take care of domestic waste from residences, and there's a portion that's left over that can be allocated to industry, but you can't base that on what you're doing today. Because if you have any hopes of development or bringing any other areas in, your treatment plant was built with federal and state money that was to accommodate your needs and probably the needs of your community for the next 20 years. So, if you sold all your remaining capacity of your treatment plant now, you couldn't develop later. And you would probably be in violation of some of the agreements that were written to finance the upgrades to the treatment plan. In Hartford County, we say, we're not going to ask the citizens to offset or soften the cost of treatment for business and industry, and we're not going to ask business or industry to soften the blow or offset the costs for the residents. Everybody needs to pay their share of the cost, and that's how we implement our program.
Do you know, with the testing data, and I don't know if you looked at any of it before you came, is the norm that the breweries are real high in BODs or high in pH, low in pH?
Typically, I think you see some, mostly a higher pH, but each and every, and the higher strength BODs are certainly a representative of beer itself and also of a lot of the wastewater, excuse me, that is generated from the beer-making process. Every time, every step of the way beer is transferred from one vessel to another, the vessel that just got left needs to be fully cleaned before they can reuse it, and you have to clean and flush those lines. You may be able to deal with water, you may need a cleaning solution or some type of acid or alkaline solvent in order to clean those lines. And those are the things that we look for and we try and find ways to head off.
And I'm looking at a cost, trying to help to figure out if there's a number out there for the breweries. If they exceeded these numbers, and we have a limit, of course, a calculation very similar to Hartford County. Has any of these breweries ever exceeded to where they had to pay in lieu of or pay?
They, yes, they will pay surcharges based on exceeding our threshold limit. We haven't had anybody create any problems where they would have been assessed a fine. But you, your surcharge is based on a quarterly average. So, when you sample, if you get a high number, you start looking for reasons why it was high. Okay, well, we didn't fully empty a batch and we sent too much product down the drain. That costs them money, they don't want to do it. They want to be as efficient as possible because they want to make money and prosper. And that's great. So, they're, the businesses are encouraged to be as efficient as possible. If they have a high-strength waste that doesn't work in their system, that can't be brought back into the beer, there are options. To send that off as a high-strength waste, or a lot of times, something with a high BOD, but otherwise as a food-grade material, can be used as a constituent in some other places, and some treatment plants will actually either pay or accept at a reduced rate that haul of waste because their plant needs that soluble food in order to make the biological processes happen. In brewing, as well as every other industry, you have a lot of options, there's a lot of opportunities to make decisions. Not everything that you have is either product or down the drain. You're going to concentrate, you're going to send solids off, you're going to maybe send off a high-strength waste, you're going to find a way to most efficiently clean and batch your cleaning equipment. If you have a high pH and a low pH, you may have a mixed tank where you can blend the two so that your pH is consistently within your discharge realm. And there are larger industries, I know Flying Dog Industry out in, I think, Frederick, they have a complete wastewater treatment plant that is smaller, but rivals your treatment plan in Elton and mine in Hartford County, in the technology and the treatment processes that they use. It sounds like for the micro or craft brew, that's really more than they need at this point. But in order for them to be as efficient as they can be, the town to be confident that they're looking out for the collection system's best interest, and demonstrate to the state of Maryland and the EPA that the program is being implemented consistently. If you get everybody one word at the front end of this, it's going to save a lot of problems. The last thing an industry wants to do is to come in, start up, and have the municipality show up and say, what you're doing is unacceptable, we're seeing problems now, we didn't envision, we need to get, we need to stop this until we have a plan to move forward. And what you really don't want is for MBE, for the EPA, to be standing next to them when they show up to make that declaration.
Well, listen, you've cleared up a lot of things with me, I was for sure. Does anyone from the board have any questions or comments? Ms. Williams?
This was wonderful.
Lou, do you have any?
I think you did an outstanding job. I appreciate it very much.
And I'm going to, of course, I'll open up the floor. We've got both brewery owners here. Any questions or comments, or maybe you can catch Mr. Williams outside there?
I have one.
Yes?
Just a quick question. So, the surcharges and what you're looking at when in your breweries in Hartford County?
Yes.
What, what do the, can you tell us a range of what those fees are for major facilities or whatever? I think that's what it's called, major facility?
In Hartford County, we just raised the rates, the surcharge rates, last year. So, I don't know them immediately off the top of my head. BOD, which is the biggest, the lion's share of the concern for the industry, used to be $36.70 per thousand pounds of BOD, and I believe that went to $77.50 per thousand pounds of BOD.
Do you have any inkling on what the smaller breweries have for pounds per quarter or year? I mean, $36, you know, I guess I'm trying to figure out how many pounds that would be, you know, that like, if you have a 10-barrel system or 10, I don't know what kind of brewery, you know, what systems they have, but.
Okay. When we, when we would take us, when we would assess a surcharge, we would take your, the entire discharge volume for the quarter, and we would calculate that in millions of gallons. Excuse me. At that point, we would take all of the lab data that you've provided and all of the lab data that we've collected. We would add them up, we would create an average. In Hartford County, we say that domestic waste coming to our treatment plan is 300 milligrams per liter. So, we subtract that off your total. The balance of what's left, if you were at 800, you had now 500 milligrams per liter, times the flow in million gallons, times 8.34, times our rate, as I said, I believe it's 77.50 per thousand pounds, times 77.50, and it would extrapolate out. Typically, it's in, depending on how high and the volume, it can, we have industries that are surcharged tens of thousands of dollars. A smaller user, somebody with, who's discharging, you know, five or 10,000 gallons a day or their measured flow, and their surcharge one is five or 10,000 gallons a day, it's going to be significantly less than that unless you're discharging 20,000 milligrams per liter BOD. And I think you're, you guys, breweries in general, would typically, if they blend and combine their waste, or they accurately composite samples so they capture not only batch discharges that they have to, but the wash waters and everything else, it would typically be lower. The entire day's representative, you'd probably be looking at 800 or 1,000 milligrams per liter after we subtract off our accepted volume. It would leave you, and I'm not really good at doing math in my head, but I wouldn't think that it would be an exorbitant cost. And if you, but here's the other thing, if you have a high-strength waste that the treatment plant would otherwise accept, or a treatment plant would accept as a haul of waste, to pay somebody, you know, $200 to come in and collect 2,500 or 4,000 gallons of it and take it and get rid of it is better than blowing your surcharge up or discharging something that's going to create a quarterly average greater than the ceiling limit that you guys would be subjected.
So, in most cases, of course, I'm really confused now.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But no, but I think what everyone's looking at, and you probably can't really give us a pinpoint number on it, but for example, if they take the most of the solids and they sell it to a farmer, and they're only using the cleaning of the tanks, I think what everyone wants to kind of hear is that you think if we're in worst scenario, we're looking at a surcharge of $100 a quarter, $200 a quarter, we don't know what breweries, that's where our challenge comes in.
Right, we have a lot, there's a lot of challenges in speaking in generalities about a surcharge program, primarily because you don't, we don't know what the strengths of the waste are going to be, and depending on the product, depending on the facilities that the brewery's using, and depending on sometimes the diligence of the people managing the actual waste collection, waste generation. You can really do a lot of things to drive your costs down. Now, settling alone is going to take out some of the, some of the larger things, but you're going to, you also have to realize, once you start installing the settling tank, you may need to start adding a chemical feed system. And now you're getting into a, rather than a monitoring situation, you're creating a waste treatment system where they actually have to be involved, actively involved in the waste treatment, rather than just maintaining the chemicals to, and the equipment to measure pH and bringing in a third-party to sample. Not that that's necessarily a bad thing, but one of the, I teach an industrial waste program, and one of the things I teach all of my students is, if you're not treating the wastewater that you're sending down the pipe with the same care and thoughtfulness and consistently with the product that you're, or the service that you're delivering to your customers, you're not going to be a business owner. The pretreatment program is really set up to hold everybody to an equal standard, and it's also set up to make sure that that standard is held whether you're in Elton or Hartford County or, you know, Mississippi somewhere. They want it to be consistent across the board so that everybody's held to the whole standard. And it used to be in the 60s and 70s and before, that people with jurisdiction shop, and, I mean, municipality would be so hungry for employees and work that they would sell out the treatment plan or the environment in order to get that distance.
I understand. Jason, do you, has there, I think we've got three other pretreatment applications out there. Do they constantly go over?
Not constantly, no.
But there has been surcharges in the past?
There's been surcharges in the past.
Okay.
Elton now stands.
Jess, I think you have.
I was going to say, can I ask my question before I like read it? Okay, so you said that you're calculating your BODs, you're getting your reading at your plant, and you're allowing so much for your general discharge, let me finish please, and then you're coming up with the number of, you know, what's left over to say, okay, this came from, you know, this, to come up with your calculation. And what's the point of having the breweries do these testing if you're not going by the breweries test to come up with your calculation on our surcharges? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, perhaps I didn't really give you enough information. We require the, a sample manhole to be discreet to that industry to capture all of the processed water from the brewing process. If you have a kitchen, if you have restrooms, if you, if there's any way possible, they should not be a part of the discharge that you're measuring for your commercial discharge. We too will come out and set up a sampler at that point and collect our information there.
Okay.
Okay? But as a, as a connected water and sewer user, you're paying for water and you're paying for sewer, just like a residential customer, and in a residential customer, those charges are based on how much of BOD, suspended solids, phosphorus, nitrogen is going to be discharged from a normal home, and that averages is there. So, we take all of the data that's discreet to just to your industry.
Okay.
And use that to calculate the average.
Okay. So, you're not testing at the plant and coming up with your numbers?
No, 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 no. We, we tested the plant.
Right.
But we also tested the industries, and our frequency is a lot less than the industries. But the other thing that we do is we do inspections and we evaluate what the industry's doing in it. If you were to come into our jurisdiction, we would say, okay, we're going to need month or maybe weekly BODs for three months. And if we see that those weekly BODs are very consistent, we may say, okay, now, we're going to modify the permit and go to a monthly testing regimen. And because there is enough fluctuation, that's probably where we would stay.
Right, because the plants, if I read correctly, Elton's plant is removing 98% of their BODs that they come in, that comes into the plant?
Yes.
Which is the industry is 85%, correct?
I, I.
Craft basis?
The industry is 85%?
Yeah, it's far exceeding minimum 85% removal requirement.
Well, we exceeded the plan.
But you're right. This facility removes 98% BODs and TSSs during the treatment processes.
Yep. No, that is indeed correct, but treatment plants and municipalities are held to a kind of a moving scale. Not only are they limited in the discharge concentration that they're allowed because they discharge to a privaterie in the Chesapeake Bay, you guys are doing enhanced nutrient removal, which is very susceptible to shock loads or high-strength waste that could, can effectively knock the bugs off kilter and prevent adequate waste treatment. But as the, as the volume of the flow goes up to the treatment plan, what's allowed to be discharged in concentration goes down because in addition to just a numerical limit in your plan, you also have something that the EPA and the state have come up with called TMDLs or Total Maximum Daily Loadings in pounds per day that collectively the Town of Elton is allowed to put into their receiving stream. And if you don't, if you don't look at that on the front end and look at that now, we, you know, they don't want to operate right at the limit of their permit. They need to have a little bit of wiggle room because when we get, what, three or four inches of rain, that too hurts the plant. We can't, we can't stop the rain, and unfortunately, there's a lot of things homeowners do we can't stop. Businesses are the regulated community, just like the treatment plants are the regulated community. So, we're the ones who get the lion's share of the herbicide. And that's basically how the pretreatment program was set. But now, we do everything fair and in the bright light of day. We invite industries in. If we have industries that have problems understanding what's expected, if they have problems getting their reports reviewed or at one time, we go out, we go through line by line. We say, okay, do the math, this is where we put, and you sign here, and this is consistent with what's expected of them. And I'm sure that that's available probably at this level as well because, you know, every. everybody wants to see the businesses booming and doing business. They want to see the parking lots full of employees and happy citizens and everybody come into their community to spend money. The pre-treatment program, while it's, it was devised by regulators, the municipalities have found ways to, to do everything that they can within their power to find ways to help the business community meet their objectives.
Mr. Williams? Nope, Scott, you got one other question?
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm very familiar with the one brewery in Hartford County.
Yes.
What are they doing as a pre-treatment for their?
I believe they're just, now, I have to step back. For the last eight years, I've been the operations manager. Prior to that, I was the pre-treatment inspector. I now have oversight over the pre-treatment program, but I, I, I'm not doing all the inspections all the time. But as far as I know, they're doing waste stream segregation, they're getting out the highest concentrations of stuff and sending that off.
Right.
And minimizing what comes down the drain and.
And I know they turn on cold water when they're doing.
When they're doing batch discharges, but that's kind of, or, or a hot water.
Yeah, they're, yeah, the, what's it, heat exchanger, right?
Right.
The heat exchanger, they have to, they actually bring in another hose with cold water. We're planning in, in our diagram, we're going to reclaim that water to use in our next batch.
Excellent idea, excellent point. Um, the best thing that you can do.
Because it's hot, I mean, it's too hot to go down the system and we know that.
It's, it's too hot to go down the system, but that heat costs you money, the water costs you money. Everything that you can do to reduce your water volume going out the door and recapture and reclaiming it is going to be a benefit for you because, and this is, this is just a nuance of, of the way municipalities work, we measure the water that we deliver to you. We don't measure the wastewater that comes out because wastewater meters are very expensive, they're very hard to maintain, and the things people put down the drains cause blockages and mess them up and, and create an issue. So.
Does Hartford County offer some kind of, like when we do our recordings to the TTV to say how much beer was made and sold, do you guys offer a deduction off of that? Some places do that.
We do not. The only avenue that we have is for an industry to say, our, more, more, our, the lion's share of our water is contained in our product and not discharged, um, is to install a sewer meter. That meter would have to be meet Hartford County engineering design criteria, but it would have to be fully engineered and installed and maintained by the industry after we approve every step. It has to be calibrated on a quarterly basis and it has to, um, be read both by the industry and by our personnel on a weekly basis. And, and we use that to, um, base our surcharge on for, I think we have two industries that actually do that. And one, one of them is the Clorox manufacturing plant and they make bleach.
Right.
So that's a huge amount. Some of the industry standard stuff on, on breweries kind of gives an indication that 50 to 75% of the water in the brewery is not contained in product, um, which sounds very high to me and it sounds like there's real opportunities for reclaim and recapture.
The biggest portion of that would be the cooling.
Right.
Yeah, your cooling water and then you have the water weight in your grains when you've done your mashin' and then your evaporation when you boil.
Yeah, you're coming to 10% boil off rate.
Right.
Evaporation when you're, when you're brewing. And then you have basically about a 20% of water that's contained in the grain that will be removed, you know, to a farmer or to whoever would come and collect those.
I, I want to say that the cost of a engineering and installing a sewer meter in the municipality sewer line, I, I think I've heard quotes from 10 to 25,000 dollars. And then a quarterly calibration, which you could do by in-house people provided you had them sufficiently trained and accepted by the municipality. But if you were to bring in a third party, that would be several hundred dollars. And I know in Hartford County, my engineering staff just loses their mind every time I say this industry wants to do this.
We currently don't have anyone that sort of their meter, do we?
No, I didn't think we had.
No, there's a couple of places in like Baltimore where they actually, their finished bottled beer, you know, their finished product. Say it's, you know, they grew 30, you know, used 30 gallons and they, final product was 15 gallons or whatever. They take that 15 gallons and the city gives them credit or wherever they are, gives them credit towards that because they're like, okay, well, that's 15 gallons if it can go down my sewer.
And, and, and that makes sense. However, administratively for, for the municipality, if it, that's an uphill climb, typically the code is written that kind of locks, locks the municipality into doing something a specific way and for reducing sewer bills based on contained in product or something would probably require a code revision, which is a little different than just, okay, we have water and sewer rules and regulations, we can do a voice vote, everybody's cool, let's go. And so, so those are the challenges that, that we face. Unfortunately, the way pre-treatment is set up by the EPA, everybody is kind of assumed to be just looking for a way to get rid of their stuff down the drain.
Right.
So it's kind of written in a way that we don't trust anybody and you have to prove your innocence. And that's a real challenge. Um, and I know we in Hartford County and certainly the fact that Elkton reached out to so many people to try and make sure that they were on the right track, I think is, is a testament that they're really committed to trying to do the right thing too. It's, it's one of those things, hey, let's, let's open a brewery, everybody likes beer.
Right.
And it's a challenge.
The, uh, the BOD testing.
Yes.
I believe it says in the town charter, it's your quarterly average.
Yes.
So if we're test, if we're only brewing, what do we say on our?
Two to three times a week.
Two to three times a week. Are we testing every time we brew because then that's not our quarter, that's not our average because we're only brewing, what's that?
Uh.
Quarter or what, you know what I mean, like?
The way that we write permits in Hartford County says, um, we, BOD is based on a 24-hour dish, uh, a 24-hour composite sample of everything coming from your brewing process. So it wouldn't be just the discharge from the brewing, it would be the discharge of every wash down and everything else combined. Beating that temperature, if you had to get rid of it, maybe just a big holding tank and, and allow a batch discharge, all the different waters combined might, might achieve the temperature that you're, that would be acceptable. But I like the idea of recapturing the warm water and reusing it even better.
Or electric and everything else.
Oh, absolutely. It's, I'm sorry, help you, where, where were we?
The, the BOD testing, it says quarterly average and if we're only brewing two to three times a week.
They would, I, I can't imagine.
I mean, there's some days when we're not doing it, you know?
Right.
You can take a test out there, but there ain't no water going down the drain, so does that give me a zero?
No, I, if, if I were writing your permit, I would say, uh, we require weekly testing during, of, of, just hear me out, of, for the first month of operation, I want to see weekly 24-hour composite sample that collects all the flow from the brewing area, um, to be analyzed for BOD once per week during brewing operations. So that means if you come in Monday and you're not brewing, you can't set up your sampler. But if you set up your sampler on Tuesday, you can, uh, that.
Who's getting my sampler?
I'm sorry?
Who's giving me a sampler?
Well, um.
They need to get the sampler.
You can, a, you can.
You got crazy, that's pretty crazy.
About 15, 1800 dollars for an ISCO discreet 24-hour sampler, which would be all you need.
Okay.
And then a sample tubing and probe, probably another couple hundred dollars that would give you years worth of stuff because you don't even have to replace that tubing every time. It's, um, it, it's not that bad. And then you, you, you seek out contract labs to give you pricing. I need to analyze BOD suspended solids and phosphorus. Where BOD suspended solids and.
Do you require nitrogen?
We do.
Okay.
Um, however, if, is nitrogen a big constituent of beer wastewater?
Not gonna know on this.
Okay. So what I would do, what I would do is I would say, okay, BOD and suspended sol, and solids are the two big ones. Now, we, 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 um, surcharge BOD suspended solids, phosphorus and nitrogen. So I would say you need to do composite sample, BOD suspended solids weekly. You need to do phosphorus and, and total nitrogen monthly. And then after that first month and the data comes back and we see that there's a great level of consistency and everything's great, we snuck out and set up a sampler too. So we got samples so that we know that what you've given me is, is on point, you know? I would be with, after a, seeing a three-month pattern of compliance, I'd probably give you, let it go to monthly.
Yeah, with metals.
I'm sorry?
Metals.
Metals, well, if you're not considered a significant industrial user, you probably wouldn't be required to sample metals. If you are a significant industrial user, then you should be required to sample all the parameters.
Who labels us as such?
Well, the EPA says 25,000 gallons per day.
Which we aren't.
5% of the average dry weather flow or the hydraulic or organic loading to a plant for any constituent, BOD suspended solids, phosphorus. A few, uh, if you're a federal categorical user, uh, there's a couple other things or, and this is the one that, that just drives everybody over the top, or if the municipality says you're significant.
There you go.
However, that, and therein lies one of the areas where there's room. There, you know, if the town says everybody who has discharges, high strength waste is a significant industrial user and that's in their code, it's in their code, it requires a code change to do it. If it's an understanding or a philosophy, that, that's a decision that could be discussed and, and maybe approached and say, you know, you're not a significant industrial user, you're not 5%, you're not 25,000 gallons, um, and based on what you're doing and, and, and the, your best management practices and, and what you have in place, you know, we feel confident that you're, you don't have a significant impact to upset our treatment process. That's a decision that can be taken without throwing it out if it's not already codified in their language. If it's already codified in the language or it's already in the approved pre-treatment ordinance approved by the state and the EPA, then that flexibility is, may be gone. And having not researched every word and been through every aspect of it, that's an area where there's flexibility. However, if, even if you were deemed a significant industrial user, I would make you test for metals once every six months because that's the minimum standard that you would have to do. And I know that there's no reasonable expectation that there'd be metals in, in your discharge.
And we got problems if there is.
I'm sorry?
We got problems if there is.
Well, there is another side of that. I've had, I've had, I've had, I've had industry sample and we got a wacky metals number that didn't make sense and the lab wouldn't throw it out and the industry couldn't explain it and they did, they did one sample, they never saw metals before, they didn't look at it until it was time to put the report together. They failed to report within 24 hours, become aware. They failed to report within five days, a written report. They exceeded a 30-day report. They, um, didn't accurately identify it in their quarterly report. They looked at $75,000 in fines because they did not identify an elevated mercury number that was above the monthly average. They only did, had to do one sample in six months. They did it in the last month of the quarter and didn't identify it until 45 days later and it just absolute, and, and I couldn't, I couldn't unring the bell for them. Now, every time they get an outside lab report, they call me up and say, hey, can I, can I email this over to you and you look at it and make sure it's in compliance with our, with our permit? And they sign off on it, they have two different people sign off on it. There, there are sampling strategies. If you have to sample once every six month for your metals, sample early. Sample the first week of the first month. And if your numbers are good, put it in your file and don't worry about it. If the numbers aren't good, you've got time to, to resample within that month. Now, the pre-treatment program says, we're going to set a minimum standard for you to sample. That doesn't mean that's all you can sample. If you get something wacky goes on and you discharge and go, how the hell did I get 25,000 milligrams per liter of BOD? Oh, well, we've lost a half of that on the sampling day. You can sample, you can get everything right and resample as many times as you want before the end of that period. The only caveat is every sample that you collect using the approved methods has to be included in your report. So you can't sample 10 times, pick the best five and send them to us. Okay? Because one of the other aspects is the EPA has, has lots of little schemes to catch that and.
Mr. Williams, I'm going to, uh, thank you for coming.
Sorry.
No, no, listen, thank you, really. It was, it really meant a lot to us, but I'd like to ask that if, uh, anyone has any additional questions for Mr. Williams, you guys can go out to, to side there and discuss them. Jason, thank you. Uh, but thank you so much for coming in. I think, I think it was an education for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jason, you want to introduce the mic?
Yeah. Yeah, he says, here's my, uh.
Yeah, you were here. Yeah, sure, yes. Well, thank you so much. All right, very good, thank you. Very good. All right, first up, we've got the Elkton Police Department, come on down.
All right, here.
Is anyone right there? I don't know what else I can. Chief, I'll try to run through this thing as quick, not as quick as we can, but as thorough as we can. And go ahead, I'll let you give us a recap and, uh, kind of tell us here at the beginning.
Okay, uh, obviously we have plenty is our budget requirements for budget beer quality, 1919, 1919. Uh, just want to give you a real quick snapshot of, uh, some of our events or, uh, what we did in 2017. First of all, uh, we're presently at 41 sworn positions in the department with, we're still carrying four vacancies. We have a total of 50 employees, 41 sworn and a nine, nine civilian staff. During the year, last year, officers were involved in nearly 22,000 incidents, wrote 3,282 citations, warnings for equipment repair orders and made about 1,600, 1,670, whatever went on record in the year. Another busy year in, uh, productive, productive years by the police department. Uh, hook up right, right to where we want to go here with the budget. First page, I outlined in departments 210 and 220, seven areas where we are requesting some additional dollars to those lines. Some of the highlights there are object 30, uh, which is, uh, a new, a new cost, um, for surveillance and video cameras in the downtown area. And that's an extension of the existing program. And as you see there, we're requesting additional 17,640. And also under Contract Services other in Department 210, object number 31, line number 31, that's our annual contribution to Department Emergency Services. That's a 3% increase or what we paid last year, plus 5,070 additional dollars being paid to, to that line. I, I don't know that you want to go through page by page.
I don't think we have to.
Just kind of summarize the, uh.
I think you have.
Additional requests there.
When we look at Department 210, you've got, uh, an increase, uh, for some legal services of, for $3,000 over last year. Repairs, repairs and maintenance, uh, general repairs, you want to budget an additional $10,000. The 18,000, uh, on item number 30, uh, associated with the downtown surveillance security camera You had already mentioned the, uh, additional for the records, uh, management system. And, uh, I think you're, uh, really seven, you've got a total of seven increases in, out of all the, and everything else is the same.
Yes.
Everything else is the same. Now, I wanted to get to the capital if we could.
Sure.
Uh, under.
Uh, under capital, uh, item number one, requesting, uh, replacement of seven vehicles, uh, at a cost of, uh, two hundred seven thousand. Uh, requesting, uh, at a minimum, replacement of our K-nine unit, uh, but would also like some strong consideration for an additional K-nine unit. Six automated external configurators, uh, if anybody's not sure what that is, that's the, uh, electronic machine that can be hooked up to a person who's in cardiac arrest. And, uh, we presently have a few, we'd like to have a few more out, out on the street.
You talking about your vehicles?
Yeah, they're in the vehicle, yes. Mike Devine, uh, our, the town's IT, uh, through Devine Computing, provided us with, uh, a cost of approximately, rounded up to sixty-eight thousand. That would be, uh, new server, new servers, computers, upgraded wiring, uh, within the police department. And he had put in, into ours, a new internet system, uh, for the town building as a whole. So, I'm not sure that all that cost, uh, would be, uh, would held within the police department budget, they make him out somewhere else in someone else's budget. Uh, and then, uh, also, under capital, uh, additional cameras for the downtown surveillance system, uh, that request is at forty-four seven oh one eight four. Uh, total capital request, three hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred and seven fifty. And it, just to be clear, the, uh, the other, uh, surveillance camera money were the, uh, annual maintenance. And that is forecasting the approval of the additional cameras in that original, going back in the operating budget.
Chief, there's no additional police officers being proposed in the program?
No, uh, the only request that I would make is to unfreeze the, uh, the hiring freeze. I wasn't gonna put in any additional until we can fill up the open spots we have. We presently have three officers, uh, three cadets in the Harford County District.
Okay. Uh, going back to the capital, uh, if, if I'm looking at this properly, and correct me if I'm wrong, we put together a, a plan, I think, uh, Larry Waldridge, uh, put together the fleet program a few years ago. If I look at this properly, if we were able to move forward with seven cars and stay on the same cycle for fiscal twenty, then I think we'll be in a pretty good shape that our oldest car in fiscal twenty would be a two thousand fifteen model. Does that sound about right?
Yes, sir.
And so then we'd be right where we want it to be.
Yes, sir, it was, it was an eight-year proposal of six cars a year to turn the fleet over every eight years, take the ninth year off and begin that process again. So, nothing that a fleet would be over than nine years. As you see in the proposal there, we have thirteen vehicles that are of that age or not, so six this year, we'll cut that in half. Next year, we would reduce, and then the following year, everything will start to turn over.
I think that's great. Is there any questions from the board on any of the police and, the police budget?
As you move forward, and, and I know, initially, you're looking at the cameras downtown. But when might there be a point where you may need to put them elsewhere? Because a lot of times, I know we're not balling the city where you got them all over, but certainly, and crime rate downtown hasn't been great. Sometime there may come a need to put maybe those in the nuisance area, I know you may not have a pole to do that. But what is your thought on that?
Well, my thought on that is, I'm thinking about it.
That's a good answer.
And then, uh, we actually, in fact, uh, tomorrow, I'm meeting...
Chief, can you tell the board where the eight cameras are at today?
Yeah, sure.
We currently have eight up there.
I know, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, in case you don't know, the eight cameras, uh, span from, uh, West Main Street at Bridge Street, up to directly in front of the, uh, county house or the county, county building. And they're interspersed on a number of different poles there. Uh, to answer your question directly on, uh, expanding into some other areas, I'm meeting tomorrow with, uh, representatives from the, uh, camera company. And we're gonna talk specifically about, uh, getting the signal from, uh, West Main Bridge out towards Langley Lane, with the eventual goal being, uh, trying to get across the place, the highway, and, uh, get some number of cameras in the Hollisworth Manor area and the Elkland area.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Great, so I'm glad to see the, uh, additional, uh, request for the, uh, K-nine, that's something I think should've been put in years ago, but, uh, probably, uh, please, uh, that...
I agree, I can't...
Well, we're at the same...
Do you have in mind, uh, I mean, I didn't really, so we currently have one K-nine officer, we'll have a second K-nine officer who's reporting this. And, uh, do you have someone that's willing to step up to the fleet?
Yeah, probably about twenty different people.
Wow.
Yeah, seriously, there'd be a number of people, uh, that would, that would like to do that. And, uh, you know, don't have anybody specific in mind at this time, but, uh, you know, we'll definitely not have a problem finding, uh, someone to handle the dog.
Mr. Lemon, you had a comment or a question?
I've got some questions. Can you explain, do you want another K-nine unit? How effective that is, and why that's such a good thing?
Yeah, if you were presently right now, we have one K-nine, uh, we gotta work on, on different schedules, and we, you know, we analyze our data and look at, you know, when the best time is to work, but, uh, sometimes there's gaps left i- in those areas of need, and we go without a K-nine. And even though we have a state police and sheriff's department that likewise have K-nines, they're not always available. And we'd like to be able to take care of our, of our own community, and, you know, kind of an idea of self-reliance. So, if we had two, uh, we'd have a much greater coverage, and, uh, their, their, uh, their usefulness, um, in, not just drug detection, but in, uh, tracking a suspect, and, uh, a lot of times alleviating a situation where an officer may have to chase somebody down. You have the dog to, uh, save, uh, save an officer from getting hurt. Hope that answers your question.
No, that, that helps.
Okay.
Drug detection, stuff like, that's stuff I wouldn't have thought of, but that's very good. I have a question about, in, in the budget here, there's, which is a continuing thing, our two police cars, one's for Elkton High, and I guess one's for Elkton Middle School. Those are county schools, why wouldn't the county be paying for that?
Well, you know, that's a very good question, and I'm not sure if we get the, uh, bounce back from that, but, uh, we have always taken the lead and, and presented a, uh, we've actually paid for the crossing guards, uh, at Holly Hall, and Chief, you can probably answer that in other terms.
Thompson.
Anything in town limits, we've, we've taken, uh, control over, but I do agree with you, uh, that in, in a lot of cases, it should be, uh, one hundred percent to county. And if we get our new councilman here, uh, we have to make sure... There you go.
If you're looking to save money, though, that's an expense that really is a responsi- the way I look at it is a responsibility of the county, they're county schools. Now, I realize they're in Elkton, but I mean, just a comment.
Yes, county has officers.
But the ones in town, we normally take care of, correct?
Yeah, middle school and the high school exclusively, and, uh, because of our present man tower situation, we just have one bouncing back and forth between the, uh, middle school and the high school. And there is no, uh, there is no remuneration for that.
Last year in the budgets, I think you were the one brought up something about healthcare costs. That's not in his budget, but, um, it is in his budget, but it isn't in his budget, so to speak. Has that been investigated or looked at over the, the last year?
Yeah, actually, we were very fortunate, and after we did some negotiation, I think we got our healthcare costs down to three percent. So, it started out at a twenty percent increase, and we got it down to three percent. And, uh, I know that, uh, we're currently getting those numbers now, so when we get the, uh, it's not gonna hit me at the last second like it did last time, I can promise you that.
The, uh, the county emergency services, we've had some discussions about that, about how good they are, effective and responsive and that kind of thing. Last year, they raised it three percent, this year, they're asking, raising again three percent. I don't know, I don't know anything about it, but you could, uh, you, maybe you should question whether it's worth three percent. Maybe you should say to them, we don't wanna pay it.
Well, I can tell you, the Chief, the Chief and I just had another conversation about this, uh, was it earlier this week or last week? It was last week, and, uh, uh, the Town of Elkton made a decision to join with the county government on emergency management services. What year was that?
Two thousand seven.
Two thousand seven. And, uh, I believe that we do need to review it, we, we brought it up a little bit last year, we, uh, I wanna say that we got the, the ripples in the water last year, and, uh, there was some good feedback from the county in regards to it. But I truly believe that the Town of Elkton can do a better job if we had it in our own house. And, uh, I do believe that, uh, but there's a lot of associated costs that we'd be behind the eight ball with today. And I'm not sure until we do a lot, uh, in fact, the Chief's getting me some information, and I'm probably prematurely saying all this right now. But we're, uh, if, we have to, we have to look at all options. But we are, we are there, looking at.
Yeah, because, you may, I, I think what I've heard is that the town did a better job of responsiveness than the county. And I suspect that that, that kind of a number you have in there, that you could probably do it for less.
I think we're paying the county a hundred and...
Yeah, it would be a hundred seventy...
Hundred and seventy some thousand.
This year.
Hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
That, uh...
For their dispatching services.
It's a lot of money.
It is. Okay, anyone else have any questions for the Chief?
I just have one quick question.
Yep.
What happens to our dog right now if he's out of commission?
Well, we mean, uh, like, if the handler's on vacation, then, uh, it's all pendled.
No, no.
Yeah, I'm giving her, uh, I'm giving you more of an answer than you want.
Okay.
Just covering all the bases here. Uh, if, are you asking, what happens if he's retired, decommissioned? Okay, then it goes to the handler.
Oh, good, okay, that's awesome. Don't we have the handler's cross train, is my guy, or is it just one?
Nah, just...
Oh, really?
Yeah, nah, the dog bonds with the handler. So, that's one of the reasons.
Our dog's very mean. So, it has to be that one?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Lemon?
You can correct me, but I think last year, uh, the Chief asked for cars and didn't get them.
That's correct.
And that's why this year, there's seven. If we'd done four last year and four this year, we'd be in better shape.
Possibly.
But anyway, uh, why I bring that up is if somebody looks at last year's number, and this year it's up, there wouldn't be that big a difference if you realize that we didn't buy the cars last year.
Yeah, we actually wanted to, uh, freeze all capital, we froze, uh, uh, all employees last year, and, uh, new hires, let's say. And, and there was, uh, you know, we had a tax increase last year, and, uh, we wanted to see where we were gonna fall with that, and I feel pretty comfortable, uh, well, I don't feel so comfortable to say that, but we'll, as soon as, uh, Steve Repole gets back and we start calculating, uh, our revenue coming in, then we'll be able to see what we can afford and can't afford, because we're, I can get here and tell you, there won't be any more tax increases. So, uh, we're gonna do everything that we can to, uh, work within those, those realms.
What I'm saying is, it should've been higher last year.
It could've been, yes.
If you had it higher last year, you wouldn't see as much difference this year.
I'm scared to see the public works budget.
Just, uh, what do you think, we wanna emphasize is that when the town buys vehicles, we buy them through statewide contracts rather than any local dealer or anything, because we can maximize the value of what we're getting, so...
Yeah, Lou, Lou touched on a very good point, that, uh, we buy through the state of Maryland contracts, and, and that's a tremendous savings. I, I would almost have to say it's a thirty or forty percent savings, uh, it's, it's huge numbers. Any other questions for the Chief?
Just, uh, the, the seventh car this year, uh, is, if we get a K-nine, if we get the additional K-nine, we'll have to have a, a vehicle specially outfitted for the K-nine unit, in addition to our other car, and, uh, you know, and, uh, so if that happens, that's, uh, that's where that seventh vehicle's coming from in this year's request. Because our requests leading up to this year have always been for, for six vehicles. And, uh, I don't know where we're gonna fall with revenues, but if we are gonna, uh, fall the freeze, so to speak, the sooner that, that we could find that out, the better, because of how long it takes us to advertise and test, and our process for hiring is so lengthy. If we know that we're gonna do it July one, that we could get our process, uh, moving forward as soon as possible, that would be great.
Is the lengthy process to acquire a dog also, and training?
Yes.
You know, so, I mean, and the dog should go to, uh, once you get a dog, we go through a very lengthy training process, so, I mean, that's, they please, you know...
Are we in the, uh, are we gonna have to replace the one K-nine anyhow?
Yeah, yes.
So, we're gonna...
Yeah, head dog is, uh, coming to the end of his service.
Would you want him from the same litter?
Well, well, same type.
No, we found another place.
Yeah.
That's highly manageable. They do a lot of the training beforehand, so it's gonna cut back on our present K-nine officer's training. The dog will come in, and it'll just be the training that brings the two of them together.
Very good. All good?
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the Department of Public Works.
I'll take care of it, thank you.
Come on down, Dan. Dan, give us kind of an overview again.
With me, um, with you guys, everybody, this is Brian McQueen, he's my internal, with physical coordinator.
That's my title.
Yes. Um, in the beginning of my budget, I have basically, basically an overview of the successes of the department for the past year. The first thing I'd like to point out is, um, if you notice in the back, I still have some vacancies, I'm still trying to fill, which were positions which were added, I'm still lost. Reason why we're having trouble filling these vacancies is our starting wages, we're not, we don't pay a lot. And the other problem we're having is down the street, we got Amazon for Tumi down the street, which is paying up to fourteen dollars an hour. Fourteen dollars an hour to start, remember, I'm off the street, I mean, it's very hard to compete with that, 'cause we start lower than that. And even my guys who've been there for number of years, and lots of skills, they make a little bit more than that, what's under the Carford County, uh, I'm sorry, the Simpson County, I'm a short local government employee, so... I like to, we do have a nice, the benefit package, we have that with, you know, these, those people, include benefits, and we do. So, I'm requesting a sal- a salary survey, maybe we have very good things, it's good around here, we just don't know, do we see some, something out, so... We were just suggesting that we, you know, have an outside firm look at it, maybe this is great, and it's what we have to, but it's always good to know. In front of what you have, this is what's out there, 'cause all I know was within this realm, so...
Dan, do you request this market survey being within municipalities, or, uh, are you looking at one, uh, skilled labor, labor, unskilled labor, like that?
Um, probably both. I just, like I said, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what's out there now.
It's like the standard average between the two.
Yeah, might be an average between the two, exactly. When the job market, you know, when unemployment goes down, and getting people are left up more difficult, it's easy to get that particular day go, so...
Very good.
That's true, the same way. Uh, we talked about all the summary projects we did last year, revitalization, we talked about that, and ADA compliance, and sidewalks. I'd like to spend a couple minutes to talk about infrastructure, okay, the infrastructures. Last year, uh, we answered over... Last year, we answered over twenty-one dollar utility locate request, we had ninety-one border breaks and sixty-nine sewer backups and the reason I bring that up is just in the month of January, we had about twenty-seven because of the weather, so we almost had like thirty percent of last year's in a three-year period, so it kind of crammed you up something like that. So with that being in mind, the question has been asked previously, well, what are you doing about replacing infrastructure? Well, what we're doing is we're actually working with our engineer right now to see if there's any constituent testing and what we're doing is we're actually documenting where the breaks are versus conditions of the pipe versus where they're at and there's a number in one area, then we kind of focus and see what's going on. It was sporadic all over the place and we had to hit or miss, seeing how that particular thing goes. There's technology out there now, in fact, for example, we talked about possibly lining a water line to see maybe, maybe the life will last longer, which is good, that's the good news. The bad news is you have to take everybody's services and rip it back out and put it back together, so that's a really cost efficient. But what we're doing for the long term is we're comparing what's out there to see, if there's a trend, then we're capturing on the trend. If it's, if it's hit or miss and we still monitor to see what happens, then in the event we do get a break, we take a piece of the pipe, you know, what's out there, actually go to the consultants and check out to see what the pipe looks like, so that's kind of what we're doing with respect to the infrastructure utility. The other thing we'll have to talk about what we're doing this time is we're actually starting a water meter project, we're starting it right now, we're switching all the meters out, we're doing it in-house, we're doing the pilot program. Right now we have Delancey Village, we're about, about forty percent done, it's going very well, we're actually tracking everything out, then the next area from there, we'll be going to Delancey Village, I'm sorry, we'll do a turn quest and then we'll work with the finance department to see how these things.
Dan, are we going actually into homes?
Yes.
And have we found any meters that have, I want to say, like, effective is probably a good word, is there any report on, have they lost their, the cable tie around them, the protective tie?
No, to that's not, I'm not sure, that's not the case so far. However, when we go into initially the house, you know, we, you check out the meter, as we're switching it out, we make sure that the remotes are working, make sure everything's not been running and then the way this particular system's set up, we have a caller radio read and the way we initially set it up is after the area is done, if you want to read the meters, instead of physically going to the house and touching the touchstone for each house, you get, you get a system, you get, basically get a reader and you go down the street and it picks up all the readings for you.
When do you expect to have that done?
The first, the first area we should have done, probably another four weeks we should be done and then we're doing the second area as we go, so basically we've been installing, testing, going as we go and we've been working with the finance department to make sure they can get the reading, so.
How many people are doing this? One?
I got two guys. I got, I got two dedicated DPW employees and I got one in the office who's actually scheduling everything, so that way they're separate, they can make the schedule, it works out that way, so things are... Other than that, finally, just capital, we'll touch on capital real quick. Capital is, because the, unfortunately I have two good mechanics and I got my guys and we're in the process, you know, requesting to, to replace, but in other words, like, I'm asking for trucks and backos, but we'll do a two-for-one swap, in other words, while we still have some value, we're looking at trading it in, and then apply against the cost of the new vehicle and again, all new vehicles that we have, we're state contracts and we see how these particular things go and we can touch on them when we get to ninety-nine if you like, there's no problem about that.
Okay, so you want me to kind of read through, you're requesting on your capital, well, let's go to, let's go to capital first.
There you go.
Okay.
Yep.
You're requesting a skid steer, an additional five-ton dump truck, but you're going to be replacing two?
Yes, correct.
Two for that one?
Yes.
You're looking at, is that quantity three, F-350s?
Yes, we had three particular vehicles which are identified, they're all like seventy, seventy thousand, eighty thousand miles, well, between two thousand and three and two thousand and six. It's not just the mileage, but it just happens, there's, there's also body to some of them as well, so that's why we're trying to replace as they go.
Now, when I look at this and I see an F-350, could we hit five with F-250s or is that a yay or nay or what do you think?
Yeah, so right now, most, most of our trucks are more than our F-250s, we have, I think it's three F-350s now and the rest are 250s, so, you know, what we've done in the last several years is we've switched to the D-box salt spreaders, we're not switched to, we've added them and it's what we had, you know, the D-box spreaders allow us a lot more flexibility in the way that we salt and, and our ability to get out and get things done quicker, you know, we can, you know, and even in times where it's just a light salt, you know, you might get a little bit of hatchiness here and there of icing, so with that, with the 250s, they're a little bit on the lighter side with those, those spreaders hold between two and two and a half tons of salt where the, you know, you see a pretty sizable difference when you load that truck down with a 250 compared to a 350 and, you know, for the price difference, it's, it's well worth it.
Now, then I see you're looking for an F-450 for, is for site welding, is that what it's supposed to be?
Correct.
Now, now, why does that welding truck have to be a 450?
Well, that's, yeah, that's, the one that we have right now currently is, that's a 350 and with everything, by the time you get done, you know, loading that down with all the equipment, that's, it becomes a bit heavy for a 350.
Okay. You're looking at replacing both the existing backos?
We have, well, exactly, we do, we're looking at getting one backo and trading two in to get to, to get that number, so taking two of the older ones, replacing with one.
Yeah, currently we have five, you know, we don't, we feel that we don't need five, so we want to, you know, you know, lower those two surplus and then, and replace it with one.
And some of these older backos, do they have heat and air conditioning in them or?
Only one out the window.
And that's one thing that I saw that during the X amount of warming breaks that we had, you know how cold it was out there, could you imagine working a backo that had, like, no side glass and it was cold?
Oh, they know.
I mean, it wasn't, I went out there and it was not fun, really, it's gosh.
And most of them have caving closures, but they don't all have heat and air conditioning, you know, the older ones, and one newer one that we have, which is, what's that, a fourteen?
Fourteen.
That, that does.
Everyone wants to be in that one.
That's a sign, that's a sign of a certain, they're very meticulous.
Those are the things that we have to make sure that we have, the features that we have to have.
Yeah, the one, the two that we're talking about, they have, you know, about seven thousand hours on them, that's, that's, you know, it's getting pretty high.
And you're looking at an additional chipper or a new chipper?
One chipper to replace an older one, in other words, what we do is, I think last year we went through, almost like seven hundred tons, just yard waste in general, but it's a lot, it's tipped up, so we discovered if the chipper really gets a little bit bigger because what we do is we kind of grind it up, we, we put a hurdle of six and that's kind of all we're thinking about, so.
Well, would it be, you mean to keep going as a, a sterer backup?
We have, we do have an extra, we have an older version one, which is still around in case one breaks down, we do have two, so that's why we'll take one after, replace one, we don't keep an older one. But your mechanic feels mechanically makes more sense.
Right.
We're fortunate, we're a mechanic, so.
Well, was any of the capital requests that you showed me here on, on item three twenty, any of that's going to be used for water and sewer?
We've already, we've already chopped them apart in three forty and three fifty.
That's what I thought, that's what I thought.
Yeah, for the, like, for the dump truck, twenty percent will go to three twenty and then three forty, three fifty will be the remainder because that's the bulk of the work, so.
Okay, and I think one concern that we always have up here is on our highway, on our roads and, and I, I think that you were budgeting a little bit more.
Yes.
For roadwork. Lou, I'm not sure how much we have in our road fund that we have to carry it over and, and I know you probably don't know and Steve's not here.
I mean, eight, nine hundred thousand?
Yes, I, I, only thing I would, I would like to use, I mean, if you could do another job or two.
I'm, yeah, I'm fine with that, yes.
I, I would like to see more work being done. Some of the roads that we have this year took a pretty good beating on, on a lot of our developments and we've been, I know you guys have been out there filling in the potholes the last couple of days, but those roads appear to be splitting, I mean, it's the craziest thing I've ever seen, I guess it's just the temperatures making them split. Now, maybe we don't have to pave them, maybe we can just seal them.
That's, that's the other thing, in other words, as part of this particular budget, so I have these particular streets in addition to, I've got striking meetings to happen and also got some sealing, we'll do everything.
Where's that, where am I?
Go to page sixteen, I'll go on two twenty, page sixteen, that's your street and painting section. And right now, this is the condition of the streets now, we will, we'd like to put a package out this spring, we made another one this fall, we'd like to see what happens over the winter also, we do reevaluate, so. The winter takes a beating, so.
Personnel, how many, how many person, how much in personnel are you down right now? Are you down any?
Oh, yeah. Right now, I've, right now I've got one, I think I've got four vacancies, you have one, two, you have four vacancies right now. I've got four and I've got five people which are out, I mean, open leave, we go back since right now, let's get that as well, it's just identified on the sheet in the very beginning, so, but I've got four vacancies. I did request from additional people and you probably wonder, "Why did I do that?" In case, in case you get the right people, you won't be landlocked, this is great, boom, handcuffed, so you don't want to do that, so that's kind of, that wasn't much behind that one. I do have some vacancies that I'm trying to fill and we've been posting it, but it goes back to the Amazon, we're trying to see what's out there. We would, just because you're interview, we would find the right person, right fit, that's why they want to be processed with us, the crew leaders and we see how everything goes together and we, we, it's a multifaceted model.
So how long have you been posting the vacancies that you have or timeframe?
Six, eight months, something like that. It's been a while, yeah. And we do, we do local, we keep it like on the website here, a lot of times we, we discover if you, if you, sometimes you advertise it works, sometimes it doesn't and we try to see what's what, we try to like zero in to see what works out best for us and each case a little bit different, so there's no here or, if there was, if there was one method, we do it in a heartbeat, but it's all in a mess.
And have you lost employees because they went to Amazon?
I lost two because he just went, actually went to construction, I lost two so far last year because he, he drew on, with your contractor.
And certainly on behalf of the board, I guess, that is a consideration on your behalf, at least not though that way, but, you know, other than employment agencies around you that's paying more money.
Exactly.
Sometimes it makes it difficult for you to, to get people and somebody's like, "Well, I do that," or you, whatever, you don't have to do that.
Yeah, you're knee-deep in a water break in January, you know, you, you know, it takes a certain skill, takes a certain way of doing things, that's why I'm very fortunate with my crews, at the same time, I have to look out in the long term, exactly, because there's only so long they can do before, you know, it's happened, but, oh, yeah, this January was quite troublesome, my crew did an amazing job because of the location that I am, so.
Another little question, do you think that with Amazon and others, that would affect your work, your workforce or does that usually affect those people for a job initially to begin?
Both.
Oh, it does?
I think, I think it's a little bit of both because you should know, because a lot of times, again, if you're knee-deep in a war, you know, in a, you know, in a border league in January, probably think, you know, for a couple of bucks, I could just, you know, work and pack these boxes all the time, so it always goes in the back of your mind because you know what's out there. And again, we also, we also want to bring in new talent, we want to train them and, you know, a lot of people, they come to me and I love training people, who's that good that way? In fact, you've seen some of my workers in the past, they're developing and they're developing skills, which they're very good for the town and for me, it's a win-win situation, yes, they come in to get something off the employment and we're happy with their skills.
Dan, I have to say that the, please carry back the message to the public works that very proud of, of the whole team down there, I think that...
They've done very good work, very happy with it.
You know, public works is the front line for the town of Elton, their trucks and, and the individuals are being seen, they are truly our ambassadors of our town and the more that they can smile and show good faith, good face and faith, that it makes certainly our town shine better and, you know, I, I'm very proud of them, I think they do a wonderful job and I've said that the tools that they need to continue, and I think the guys are excited down there. I know that we, I know that we put a little bit of pressure on your team during the cleanup for the town of Elton, over a hundred thousand pounds of trash that you weren't expecting to be working on and cleaning up and I have to tell you, you guys did a great job and I think the byproduct of this has created more workforce to maintain that additional twenty acres or so of land that we've kind of reclaimed, but I can tell you, the public is loving it for, loving it right now and every day that they make improvements down there, so the tools that you guys need, we're here to help continue to do that for you. Thank you.
And I would like to add to that, Rob, even before you came on, I think, really, Mary Jo and I realized there were a much more complaints that we used to get as commissioners sitting here now with you, I'd like to, again, as you said, credit to what they have done.
It's credit to my crew, they do excellent work, oh, yeah.
Now, I spoke to you yesterday and I thought in an effort to free up manpower for you, I thought maybe we should read, you know, let's take a look at maybe privatizing, cutting a couple of the parks. Now, I brought that up to you because I thought, well, okay, maybe the, the, let's not, let's look at the price per cut maybe aspect of it, but I was trying to think, how can I give you more bodies to do other things than be locked into mowing grass all the time? I know that the guys take a lot of pride in cutting those parks because that is a feature area of the town, but I think you did a few numbers for me or have you researched that or you have something that you want to feed to me?
Like, yes, we did.
All right, very good, I'm glad you're prepared.
It just so happens that whatever his many jobs, he's the charge of the grass crew, he's got, he does numbers for a living, so.
Okay, so basically, I guess, you know, just looking at parks, I think that was kind of basically really the topic. There's, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's nine areas that, you know, that we would consider parks and, you know, I didn't know how in-depth you wanted to get with it, but, you know, score, I guess, some of the highways of it, so within that, we're talking about about sixty-eight point three-two acres weekly that we cut, cut, trimmed, you know, and, you know, as far as total, total hours, the way, like, I guess, to back up a couple of steps that hopefully explain myself better, but within the last two years, we've changed a lot in the way that we, you know, we operate and run the grass crew, so, you know, in the past, you know, we had, we had the sediment ponds, we had the parks and we really had what I call the common areas, which is everything else. So we kind of restructured everything because it seemed like we were just chasing our tail around and, you know, so, you know, basically we took the town, we have two crews and we pretty much cut it in. What we used to do is we'd have a list that we did of the ponds and then pretty much everything else, so, you know, we'd go through and we'd cut the common areas, so, you know, and the parks and then the ponds, we'd get to kind of when we could and then, you know, basically last year is where we kind of cut over and we said, "Okay, you know, cut the town in half, we have two crews, this crew, anything within your area, pond-wise, do that as well while you're going around doing your other routes." So we have kind of routes that we go, we do the same thing every week, you know, and from a management standpoint, I mean, I pretty much know where they're at, where it should be without even being, being there.
You're telling me something I didn't know.
Yeah.
What you're telling me right now.
I mean, I used, I did this for a long time, so it, I, you know, it comes pretty, pretty simple and that's why we did this, so we can pretty much, you know, if it's eleven o'clock, you say, "Well, they should be over at, you know, this park or that park or wherever" and most time it is, and they do the same thing every day for every week for that matter. So anyway, kind of with that said, you know, the, the parks now are, and in addition to that, we've kind of used equipment that we didn't use in the past, one being, you know, we have two fifteen-foot back wing melters and, you know, first we started using two and it's like, you know, that's, we, we don't need that right now, one's a great backup because things do go wrong with them and, you know, if something goes wrong, we grab the other one and we just keep them down, just stay on our, on our schedule, so, you know, the parks have become a minimal thing for us in the, in the grand scheme of things, it's really not a big deal. So that's sixty-eight acres, you know, with a fifteen-foot cut, you know, we're doing all the big areas with that and then the guys come in behind the... You know, we're doing all the big areas with that, and then the guys come in behind them with the zero turns, and they do the, I call it the finish work, you know, around the trees, the smaller areas. So, you know, that's kind of how we operate, um, you know, and, you know, as far as the, the parks are concerned, basically, using just a, a, you know, a, a rough average number, you know, loaded labor rate of twenty-five dollars per hour, you know, weekly, it, it's about nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents it costs the town to cut those parks.
That's everything.
That's, yeah, that's all the parks.
How many people?
Uh, we have five, we have, we have five people, so, well, five people in the grass group total. So, of that, that really, um, you know, do the parks, um, you know, you're, well, it's just equated to hours. You know, we have a total of thirty-nine point seven-five hours.
And does that include the twenty new acres?
That, that does not.
Okay, so that's still out there.
Right. So you're telling me that third, you're, for forty hours, you can cut the whole sixty-eight acres down?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's, that's a far cry than where we were three years ago.
It's, and a, and a big chunk of that is, you know, utilizing that Batman mower. I mean, we could, I could cut, you know, that's six one half of another. We could run two of those mowers, but then you'd be just taking another, you know, same time, taking another kind of zero turn. So the optimal way that I found to do it is run, I mean, I have one guy that runs that, um, pretty much every day. He's pretty much done in, he's basically done in three to three and a half to four days. It depends on the, you know, the season, how thick the grass is, or how, how.
Well, listen, I, you don't even need to go any further. I appreciate the info you gave me. Going back, uh, just a few years ago, I used to see six guys.
Right.
In Moto Park, and I'm thinking, okay, that's forty-eight hours of cut. Right, and, uh.
It's, it'd be hard to beat what we do today. I mean, we're doing, we're doing, we're doing all the grass in the entire town now. Ponds and everything. If you go around and look at the ponds, the ponds are cleaned, they're cut. You know, with five people, and pretty much, the, the one crew, they're done in about three and a half days, maybe four. And then they go around, and they do, you know, weed control fences and that. Uh, the other crew, they're, they're, they're probably, they're probably about four to maybe four and a half days. You know, and then they're done. And again, they'll go around, they'll do the weed control in their area, and then they, uh, the guy that drives the Batwing, he's done, you know, three, I'll say three to four days, it all depends. And, you know, the same thing, they all go, they jump on, you know, maintenance type stuff.
See, you get, you get, it ties back to the labor, like, I mean, you've been, what, three years? Was there ever some Brian, and then?
Four.
Four years, sorry, four years. And again, we get, we've got him, we've got a landscape guy we hired, you know, like last year to book on the vacancies. They know what it's like out there. So as a team, we look at the approach, what's the best way of doing it, and this has been a lot of trial and error, so that's why, you know. Just, right, not doing the same thing necessarily all the time, so we're trying to see different things, if that works out.
Well, the parks look great, like.
They do. And what's the landscape?
No, they, they, you're tied in, yeah. It's not really landscape guy, it's more grass cover, I call it landscape.
Well, the, one of the new, yeah, the new hires from last year, he's, he's got a, got a twenty-year background in that, so.
Mr. Lemon, you had a comment?
What do, what do the grass cutters do this time of year?
They're, uh, yeah, they're, right now, we've had them, they're, they're between water, they, they'll help out, which came in handy this year, uh, water leaks.
Twenty-seven leaks.
Yeah. You know, water leaks, any type of infrastructure maintenance, um.
You're able to keep them occupied?
Oh, yeah. Oh, definitely. See, you're in our position, you always, you always, you know, design for the valleys and work towards the peak, not too, a little bit of, you know, you don't want too many valleys. Because when they get idle, you don't want that, so that's why you always try to make them busy, so it's always good that way.
We, we started out at the end of the summer, after we stopped cutting and doing, you know, some of the, some of the encroachments on the sediment ponds, the fences. You know, we, we did several of them, or cleared the buffer areas, so we can, you know, even maintain that for, so we're either, we're chipping away, getting those things so they look pristine, you know.
They, they have a lot of nice people working for them. I've talked to some of them that come up to my place, and, uh, they also follow your rules. They did a big job at my house, and I, I kind of offered them some money, and they said it was against the rules. But if you're looking at the, if you're looking at the equipment, um, some of this equipment is probably not used all the time, it's used as needed. So the question is, is there any opportunity to share equipment with the county? Or would you, um, not buy equipment, and then if you need it, go to somebody like Craft Brothers?
You start getting the public private and different things. It's more liability, it's, you know, something happens, you know, it just, it doesn't leave that way. Basically, I think for insurance and capital-wise, we control everything, so we know what's what.
Yeah. Anyway, you, you know, the county has equipment that probably is not as, maybe underutilized. You may have equipment that's underutilized, maybe you get together, and you work something out. Now, I realize sometimes you both need the same piece of equipment at the same time, but that's not most of the time, I would think, if you plan it out.
Well, sometimes if there's something I have, you know, like, you know, like a vacuum truck or something, that the county needs or something, sometimes, well, you know, if you, if we can assist, sometimes you do assist them, depending on the case, but hey, if it's very small, depending what's involved with it. So sometimes we'll reach out and say, do you have something? But it's very infrequent, because, you know, sometimes, we, sometimes you do overlap, and that's at all.
Very good. Uh, anyone from the board having other questions for Dan?
I've got another.
Mr. Lemon?
One other thing, is a new process up the county wants to look at, uh, combined purchasing and that kind of a thing. And like, you probably, you know, you're buying salt and this and that, is, or hopefully, that's something you'll look at, is combining with the county where you can save money on volume purchases. I assume that's in the works anyway.
I think they, they do that all the time.
Exactly, yes.
You buy your salt with the county?
No, no, what we do is, we, again, state contract pricing, based on state contract pricing, and it gives us the gauge line to see what we need accordingly, so. We do do it that way. Because with DGS, you've got the numbers, based on the numbers, you can see what's left. A lot of times, with the county, the county will get a little bit better rate, because they buy a lot more, that's the reason why, so what we buy, I guess, is the negotiating tool that we need. And that's how, that's how we purchase our material. And the other thing is, just, just to fill in a little bit on the snow, a two-inch snow will take probably twice as much salt than a ten-inch snow. It's how they melt, because the little storms we got, they just eat your material up, that's why I'm here. But the big ones, works pretty easy, highly enough to go, you need some snow down, it melts, it's easy. But the little ones, well, they're, they're challenging.
Dan, do you want to add anything else to your budget, or are we good?
I think we're good. I think, I think we're very good, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you. You should have one. Happy Valentine's Day.
Okay, Jeff Holder, come on down. I lost it on my agenda. Bladed? Okay, the bladed buildings. Uh, let's see, we put this on the work, wait till Michelle, we put this on the workshop, and I think what we've done is we've compiled, we're starting to compile a list of the bladed sites. And, uh, John, where are we, are you involved in this? The, the, uh, we're, I'm, I'm trying to think what we were going to discuss today on the workshop here, on the bladed side. What was our?
What originally happened was Ms. Gottes came and was concerned about a house that was burned in the Hundred Block of Hollingsworth.
Yeah.
And was worried that it would stay vacant for several years.
Got it, so.
And the conversation went.
Very good. Uh, that's exactly what it was. I, because I was kind of wondering, because we did a lot of, after that meeting, I know we started to identify the buildings. Uh, once we get these buildings identified, I think that we're going to move forward with, uh, trying to figure out, uh, identifying who owns the properties, seeing if there's any, uh, uh, I want to say, any issues with liens, or have they been processed through, are they going up for tax sale? And I think that the, the commitment that we made, or we'd like to make as a board, is we want to move forward with these things and, and see how we can clean them up.
So, so you, from what I understand, is that one thirty-eight, one forty, West High Street, which everybody brings up to you in the meeting, is going back up for a tax sale the first of June. Am I correct, Louis?
I don't know, I haven't contacted the county.
I, I understand that the taxes haven't been paid yet, or, or not due yet. No, they're not committed to go to the taxes.
If they're not, then they'll be gone.
And, and from your standpoint, uh, uh, when you're going, I guess, when you're going around the town, and, and you're looking at, can, can you give us an understanding of what you look for?
What I look for is like, a perfect example is on O-Seg Street, one fourteen, one sixteen, owned by Dr. Schu. I noticed that a couple of bottom windows had been broken out. There used to be a rental unit, she doesn't rent it anymore, but she keeps the property up, she has somebody cutting it. And I said, you know, probably one of the best things that you could do, man, is board the windows up and paint the window, the boarding, the plywood, and skip with an exterior paint, so it's not feeling wrong. She's done that, there's been nothing else that has happened there.
How long has it been that way?
Uh, we had it boarded up, I want to say, last year, seventeen or sixteen.
Do you think there's a reason she doesn't rent it out?
Uh, that I wouldn't know yet.
She didn't offer that information?
No, no.
Of course, okay.
And then, the one down from Commissioner Piner's house, we had warned that people were going in there, sleeping. And I called the, uh, property management company, and they immediately had people out there, and they boarded all those windows up. Now there's an image can out there, so it seems the property management company has got the okay from the bank, or whoever owns the property.
It's the one that worked through it and get it prepared for sale.
By our code, how long can they keep the windows boarded up? Is, there is no.
There, there is no codes that I have seen on that.
I think that, that is an issue. Um, there's a lot of interaction with town ordinances and state laws related to condemnation, which means you can't use it, versus, uh, imminent, imminent domain where the town pays it over and pays the fair amount of debt. That's regulated by the state, uh, real property level. But here, I, I, as I get, I haven't seen anything that really addresses anything other than, you can condemn it for safety and those kinds of issues, uh, which means they can't use it, then you can prescribe how they have to bring it into compliance, so that it's no longer unsafe. But that doesn't talk about the visual impact of the building. I don't know what we can do if we have a property that's boarded up, it's safe, people can't get in, there's nobody, unlikely that somebody's going to burn it down from the inside, things like that, where it's just boarded up for some considerable period of time.
And actually, if you look at it, when they board the properties up, by the town code and the, and the housing section, you have to keep your place waterproof and roadproof. And that's exactly what they're doing when they put each houses up. You're not allowing water to get in through the broken windows, and you're not allowing any animals, say squirrels or birds, to fly into the structure, the dwelling itself. Actually, they're helping themselves.
So then we can't do anything? We're, we're done? We're dead to water?
Unless we pass some ordinance, well.
I would like to look at that one.
Are there any other municipalities or, or WML that could advise us on options?
Well, I've looked at some other.
Oh, sure, okay. Which one?
Stuff like, um, Northeast has a, uh, one that's very similar to ours, and they do the very similar thing. If they're, if it's unsafe, you don't know, should, if they did our notice, be on, uh, on notice of the unsafe condition, give them a certain amount of time to fix it, and if they don't fix it, the town can, and then reduce that cost to a lien on the property, if, if they don't pay the town in a certain period of time.
Then that's smart, you can go with that.
In terms of visibility, I, you know, just the straightforward appearance, I haven't seen anything yet that allows the town to force them to make the appearance better, as long as it's safe, you know, there's no access, as, as you were saying. But one of the problems, and it's, it's been a practical, real-world problem, is that it's, it's not like a one-size-fits-all kind of problem. I mean, you work with this property, and the property's imperfect for the other property. Perfect example is at one thirty-eight, one forty, West High Street. We've talked about that on a number of occasions. We found that, that property, uh, the windows were out, this goes back some years, windows were out, they all got boarded up, well, the boarding, the, I think they used particle board, didn't they?
Uh, I wasn't here when they first originally boarded it up, and they possibly could have at that time.
At any rate, this past year, it was, um, we noticed that the boards were starting to fall on the windows. And then at one point, a door was a jog, and there was an appearance that maybe somebody had been sleeping in there. Those are all closed back up again, and there's no, there was no access. But then more recently, I noticed the very top window in the very front, that boarding is out again, and it was probably difficult for somebody to climb up on that roof of a porch and get in there, but. So is that.
So the town, as a town, we can't enforce, uh, not the bladed area. I'm, I'm trying to think, neighbors that are living, it becomes a nuisance for the neighbors. Now, if it becomes an issue for the people that live beside them, not just because it's boarded up, or, you know, I understand, can't we?
Well, we, we have a nuisance of being.
Yeah, so I was just.
We have a liability, a fine.
What's that, nuisance of being?
Michelle, could you, when you find that, can you read it?
The basic concept of a property that is constantly being ready by the police and people being arrested for whatever it is they're doing in there that's, that's against the law, and it comes a time when it's apparent that, you know, the landlord is in, in ownership or whatever.
Can we, can we, I think there's nothing. So then, if we did eminent domain, took it everywhere, practically.
What would the fine be in regards to? I think we're, it sounds like our hands are, by our court ordinance and our codes now, if they make it waterproof and roadproof, that's all we can do.
And, well, if they're not, and if we cut the grass, that's two areas that we could attach.
Well, when you cut the grass, you're, and you, you're automatically winning the property.
We are.
Or how much, you know. And that was something else I was going to say. Everything that Brian told you, I don't think he told you about the fifty, sixty houses, I sent them a year, they had the grass cut.
Okay. So I guess our, right now, I think we're doing the right thing. We're identifying the houses, we're going to keep, we're going to try to find out additional information on those owns. And when they come up for tax sale, or any type of opportunity for sale, we just have to figure out, we have to find a buyer to buy them, or we take some type of action ourselves at that point.
Well, I think we need to change what's in the nuisance of, uh, property nuisance abatement, because in here, it says responsibility of property management, but it's not under this section. And that's something we can look at.
Explain to Jim what's it, uh, means.
Um, it says, every owner of real property within the town is required to manage the property in a manner so as not to create or allow public nuisance, or have the neighborhood, or have an adverse impact on adjoining properties on, in the neighborhood. So like Earl's saying right there, with his house next to him.
What's that, is there a fine, or is there?
To violate the provisions of this chapter, the owner shall remain liable for violations thereof, regardless of any contract or agreement with any third party regarding the property. So I think if we, can we look at this?
Well, yeah, absolutely. The question becomes, let's say you have an owner that falls into that, where you're defining it, what do you do with it?
Well, that's what will have to be discussed.
Yeah, we need to put a consequence in.
Yeah.
Can you review that, John, and maybe make a recommendation what we can do?
What, my observation is, for example, the, uh, place that was taken down next to the coffee shop.
Right.
The town cuts the grass all the time.
Any basis?
Right. So, but that's fine, you know, I mean, it's, it's.
I think we're charging four hundred dollars a cut or something like that, and he's paying it.
He's paying it, I didn't get the receipt.
But others don't pay it, and then of course you're doing the property, but but Dr. Schu, still remember what her plans are to do, what she's going to do with that property, does not look to me like. But Dr. Schu, depending on what her plans are to do, what she's going to do with that property, does not look to me like she has any plans to use the property.
I could reach out to her again.
How many liens can you put on before you say, I'm taking it, I'm sorry, but.
Well, we don't cover.
Well, when you get into what you just said, which is, how many liens can you put on it until we say we're taking it? You, you, um, very difficult, not possible, but under the real property article in the state law, uh, and it's also regulated by, by the law and constitution, on how you can go about doing that. You can take, you can basically take it immediately, if you either post the money for fair market value or pay it, if it's for rose, things like that. If it's just for the purposes that we're talking about, um, then you've got to follow the eminent domain procedures, um, which involves courts and, and stuff, and then, and then in the final analysis, the town's going to pay the fair market value, they have the property appraised, otherwise it's appraiser. I don't know what that, 138, 140, would be appraised at, but if the appraisal's so low, that it's below the assessed value, the owner can demand the assessed value, you can do it. So we could be kicking in on money to take over some of these properties.
I hear you. Well, listen, let's go that direction that we just talked about, Jeff, thank you so much for coming in.
I'd like to get the fines, I'd like to see them.
Well, we got to hit fines, Zach.
What, what did it mean, John, 324 Hollings Works was redeemed?
It actually wasn't redeemed, uh, it was voluntarily, uh, the, uh, US needs bought it, but I think they gave up their right to, to, to. It was only, it was like fifteen thousand.
And that's what they backed out of, on the order. So it's, it's, it's a, I don't know, again, and Jack Daniel Barry, when it was. So I think that's one of the reasons they abandoned that. Because I sent a letter to, um, a party with them, their US lien, about when they take it over, we weren't there to act it. And so they, they sent me back, and I think I shared with Ward, that was what Sal T. thinks, and I think they kind of realized they didn't want any deal with a house.
Most properties go for tax sale.
So is that what's coming up?
Don't go to tax sale. In other words, they go to tax sale, they never transfer ownership. And the person that buys it gets interest on the money that they posted, okay? So that, for most of them, they're just interested in that interest that they earn.
That's only if it's redeemed, though. He didn't, he wouldn't earn any money on that.
No, he didn't, but I'm just saying, you know, look at more broadly, most properties don't actually transfer ownership. Owners who lost in the tax sale during that next year should come back and pay the taxes and.
Right.
These other buyer things that are, whatever percentage.
Very good. Well, listen, we're going to go seven, we're going to go seven more minutes, we've got one more thing on the agenda. And, uh, when we were down at Ocean City, I think everyone, uh, was able to walk the boardwalk, and you saw those beautiful banners that were on the boardwalk, and it was a, basically a hometown hero theme on every pole. They had veterans of, uh, I guess that's, is that Wycomico County, or is that Worcester County? Worcester County. Worsher, that's how they say it in Maine, Worsher. Uh, so the, the, uh, the, the banners, uh, it was heroes of that county. And, uh, in fact, that day, I snapped a picture, I sent them to Mary Jo and Earl, and I think probably I wanted, I was kind of excited about it. Uh, last year, uh, Mary Jo and I had some discussions, we spoke with, uh, the Elton VFW, Charlie McCoy, and he actually, at that point, said, hey, listen, I'll sponsor, uh, I think it was like five thousand dollars worth of, of these banners, uh, to make it happen. Now, we've never done anything with it, because it, since then, there's been additional questions. I know Michelle had reached out to, uh, the, the folks in Pennsylvania to get some information for us. But I think we need, as a, as a board, what we want to see on our polls, before we can go any further, is do we want, uh, what do we want to classify as a local hero? Is it, is it people that served in the military? Is it people that served on our local fire company? Is it our, our local police? Uh, how do we want to approach, is there going to be at all?
That was one of the things that was brought up when we was walking, because we don't want to offend anyone, we don't want to leave anybody out.
Yes.
And we don't want to take anybody being slighted. So maybe we need, need to go month to month, whatever we can bring up. During the month, somebody that we can highlight for that month, that has done something, you know what I'm saying? I'm just saying, uh, I'm thinking of that.
Well, yeah, and I mean, we did get the American flags welcoming that, because we figured every other poll, because we weren't sure how many we would get. Um, Charlie McCoy, when I last talked to him, was having problems getting people to commit. Um, so we really have to do, uh, something more to get it out there, because we want the flag banners to go up from Memorial Day to Labor Day for the summer months. And that's when this program can take place as well. They were a hundred and nine dollars for the banner, um, but I'm going on national conference, and there's two banner companies that are going to be there that might want to beat the price, because I used them years ago.
Well, I, I guess, I think, we're, I guess my, my biggest challenge.
Is who.
Is, is the who, and, and it comes down to the money. For example, uh, if, 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 uh, we ask the VFW to sponsor X amount of people, then that's up to them to choose those individuals they want on the polls. I don't think that has anything to do with us. But I think, uh, I think it has to be a cost by the family, for example.
Right.
So if Earl wants to put, uh, your great-great-grandfather up there on that pole, that should be up to you and your family to pay X amount of dollars to do it. If I want to put my father up there, I think it's my expectations big, but we got to make this open to everyone that wants to put maybe their loved ones.
Shouldn't there be some criteria of how you get your name up?
Bingo. You hit it, exactly.
I mean, I love my mom and dad, but.
Well, here's where I'm getting at. Well, here, well, here's where I'm getting at. In Ocean City, it was military-based.
Yeah.
Do we want military-based? Do we want to include, uh, firemen and, and service organizations? Or do we want to do it military-only? Well, military-only would be the easiest way.
It would.
Mr. Lemon?
You might want to add students in there, too, up at the schools.
There you go, you got, it could keep going and going. In Ocean City, it was all military.
When the alliance said that they wanted military, Eva Donahue, who was big with the fire.
I thought, as, as old as Cinerly Fire Company, a hundred and seventy-five years old, is that right? Was that the number we had the other day? Or a hundred and twenty-five years old?
Hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five years old.
Eighteen ninety-two.
And I was just thinking, in Elton, there's probably enough people that served the Cinerly Fire Company that would fill downtown with that local. So if you had a, now, going back to what Earl was thinking, I think this is where you were getting at, is that you could have a firehouse theme for a fire company, maybe to the month of, May is the month of, uh, safety. June, you could change them up and put whoever the local law enforcement was, and then July, maybe change them up to military, I don't know.
If you know what I'm saying, it might be expensive taking down and putting up every couple of events.
Exactly, we have to have.
But if you look at it from the point of view, Memorial Day, Labor Day is typically military.
Military.
Because then you've got Memorial Day, Labor Day, until for the July, et cetera.
But.
So towards the end of the year.
But they're paying for it, the people are paying for it.
Understood, but if they pay a hundred and fifty dollars to get three or four months up for a specific timeframe, for the military would be Memorial Day to Labor Day. Then in the fall and winter time, that's more fire safety, because of fireplaces and so forth. So for the last couple of months of the year, fire.
Okay, so I think we're, so I'm asking for help here. So let's, let's look at military first, and I, I'll run with the program here. Military, okay, do we want military that was just Elton, or military that was Cecil County?
I think if we go to Cecil County, it'll promote tourism downtown.
How many polls?
I mean, that's just off the top of my head.
How many polls do we have there?
We have fifty-two.
So we want to fill up fifty-two.
Or we could fill up twenty-six and do half with the flag. So it would be flag, hero.
Katie, do you have any comments? You've got experience with this.
I do.
All right, give us your experience.
I know, you want me to sit over here?
No, no, May, so. I'm sorry, Katie.
Katie has experience with this.
I do, and I actually passed Michelle, um, Pat Riddance's number, he and I were very integrated with promoting this program. They had thirty polls on the boardwalk, Mary Jo is right, it did promote tourism, people, families did come down and to specifically look at theirs. But then again, it also was a boardwalk, so that might factor into something. I don't remember what the cost was, I'm pretty sure Ocean City paid for it. They had a banner, um, removal ceremony, which was really nice, a, a banner presentation ceremony. They had the families and come in, and they would give them their banner, and they would give a little speech. They also expanded the program.
Well, that is nice.
That's very nice.
They expanded the program to active-duty members. Uh, just so you guys know, obviously, one of the problems is finding veterans, because they're getting older. And, you know, what comes, yeah. So, I don't know, that's all I have to say about the experience with it. But they did it from May to Labor Day, but if you have flags, you're putting up, well, I don't know, that's up to you guys.
Did, when they had the ceremony, did they go home? Did they go home one day?
Yes.
See, that's a nice touch.
That is nice, yeah.
Two thoughts. I don't know why, is, you're in the historic districts, you know those people, right? Because no merchant would be able to put that up in front of your shop, so I'm going to kind of think about that. And also, the town needs to have the screening mechanism, but others have been used.
Right.
Oh, well, yeah, because.
I, you know, just, just the history of our country, Delaware, Maryland, had people of both sizes of the same age. One, like, one granddad, you know, and, et cetera, was, was similar in the form of, like, spare controversies and stuff. Just for somebody that wants to, like, their favorite product, bringing fifty-two families in here.
You know, meaning adjourned.